I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the meeting to order. I'll call attendance. Mr. Worrell.
Present.
Mr. Sora.
Here.
Mrs. McGinley.
Here.
Mr. Riggs.
Here.
And Mr. Martis. That was the roll call. Mr. Martis? Okay, great.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, has everyone took a look at the minutes? The claims and the financials?
I'll make a motion we accept the minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, I gotta do a roll call vote.
Oh, yes, sorry, everyone. Everything's gonna be...
Yeah, the minutes you might have been able to slide by, but technically you should.
Okay, and you said I need to call each one even though they made the motion?
Yeah, even though they made the motion.
Okay. Even though you made the motion, I'm gonna call a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Debbie?
Yeah, aye.
Aye. Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Yep.
We're doing a roll call vote for the minutes.
Aye.
Okay, and Jeff?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Claims.
I'll make a motion we accept the claims.
Second. We have a second. Sherry?
Steve?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
All right. Last of all, the financials.
I'll make a motion we accept the financials.
A second.
All right, we have a second.
Debbie?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
Great, thanks.
All right, everyone. After listening to the governor's plan of starting back up, they're still suggesting that our meetings be essential items only, so this should be fairly short today. Public hearing, none. Guests, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, approval to accept two $750 donations to the fire department and the police department, one each.
Right, that's from the American Legion Gaming. They gave 750 to police and 750 to fire.
I'll make a motion we accept the money for the police and the fire.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
And Jeff?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved.
Thank you to the American Legion for that. We appreciate that.
Yes, definitely.
Do you want to thank them? Commercial permits. Jeff?
Well, I'd like to suggest that the town puts in writing that before a permit is issued for a commercial building, that the state permit be issued. We call it to stop a lot of confusion, and technically they are supposed to issue a state and a local until state's approval. And there's, it's called the G A R stipulates. While it's exempt, there are very few things exempt from a design release, especially about buildings that nobody's in. You know, buildings not using like electrical, storage, switching off or something like it where nobody's at other than that. More than 500 square feet standing alone has to have a permit or 300 feet attached to the building.
I'm assuming you're talking about in general a building permit?
Yes.
You're gonna say a building permit.
Yes, a building permit.
So, we don't really have to start...
Commercial building.
For a commercial...
Commercial project, yeah.
You don't require that now locally?
Well, yes, but has it been...
It hasn't been done.
Oh. And to give a little background information, Jeff, tell me where I go wrong here, but we've had the Alco building that's being converted to the Reed facility was moving forward, and it just came to Jeff's attention that they hadn't applied for the proper permits. So, Jeff, and this is at the state fire marshal...
The state level handle, that was state level.
Yes, at the state level. They were shut down, and they're wanting to do whatever they can to move forward, but at this point, they must have the appropriate approvals from the state.
Right. And the state is who brought to our attention that we hadn't issued a local?
Well, it came down, I really can't talk about it, Bob, because the P I O is supposed to answer any of those questions directly concerning that publicly. I can't discuss at my level.
Well, I mean, you can't even say whether, how this all came about?
What came about?
Well, it was trying to get, finish the project, and we found out they appointed a new local, and he asked for help. When I got contacted for help, we found it wasn't a permit.
You're talking about the construction design release?
Yes.
On a commercial project, you have to have what's called a construction design release for a commercial job.
Did Michael or Doug used to do those, or?
Apparently, this one didn't get that.
I know this one didn't, but somebody has...
Somebody has.
Yeah. So, it's not a matter of us changing codes, we just have not followed our code?
That's probably correct, yeah. And I'm not familiar with the whole story, so...
Right. Well, I'd say we find out what applicable section is and get them to do an application and approve it if it's all...
I would agree with Bob right now. Rather than changing anything, I'd like to move forward from this one. They know they're going to get it in writing as we go and hire someone else. Maybe Steve, you could help us make sure that they know what the proper procedure is, and if we need to change it after reviewing it, so be it. But it sounds like we had an issue because of someone either not being there or we're not doing it in the first place and moving on.
He said we should have a G A R book.
Man, I guess I missed, I missed what Bob said. Basically, this is a state level problem, correct, or is it one of our codes?
It is a, it's a document that needs to be signed for the state. However, our codes, we signed off and moved forward with the building process without them having that state code.
I see.
If I may, under your local code 15307, it says, "A permit shall be obtained before beginning construction, alteration, or repair of any building or structure, the cost of which exceeds $500, using forms furnished by the Building Code Inspector. All permits shall be issued by the Building Code Inspector, and all fees provided for adhering shall be paid to the Town Clerk Treasurer." So, I go back to my question before, I would guess if Michael and/or Doug have ever done that, do they have those forms that need to be completed? I mean, I can't believe, this is the first time that a building's been done in town, isn't it?
No.
No.
So, all we need to do is have, if we can find that form, have it filled in. Now, this doesn't break it down between commercial and residential, but...
This is actually not a permit for the town, though. It's called a construction design release that has to be filed by the person who's building the project, their architect or engineer. They file this documentation with the state, and...
Well, that's not our doing, though. I mean, this is the only thing we have.
It should have been required before they started the project, and I will say that the people who did the project know this, they do it all the time, so I'm not sure why they didn't do it this time. But apparently, the state doesn't have a design release for the project, so...
Jeff, they're looking to get that here in hours.
Yeah.
Okay. Bob, I'd rather just move on from this and let's learn from our mistakes here. They have, they're shut down for a couple days. When we find someone to take the open position, we'll really emphasize that. And we'll see what happens after that. Fair, Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. All right, moving on. Interlocal agreement, the sales of the canine and associated equipment.
Hopefully, everybody got my email, well, actually, two weeks ago when I was able to reach the agreement with the Wayne County Sheriff, and then sent to you today, the, in writing agreement between the town and the Sheriff's Department. And for purposes of the public, this is because of a deputy who has been the handler for your dog, Barry, is leaving the department, going to work for the Wayne County Sheriff's Department, and due to the fact that you do not have someone else to handle Barry now, and that it is not prudent to keep Barry not in service while owning it, the town believes it's wise to find someplace to transfer Barry, and it was everybody's concern, I like the one paragraph for purposes of the public, that "Due to the fact that Barry was purchased with money raised by local citizens and others through the grateful assistance and efforts of Cambridge City's Neighborhood Crime Watch Organization, it is the desire of the town to transfer Barry to another local organization so that Barry can continue to perform services for the benefit of Wayne County citizens. And the Sheriff's Department has graciously expressed its desire and willingness to purchase Barry, along with the kennel used at home of any future handler in order to keep Barry a resident of Wayne County, and to pay the town some $6,000." So, there were some other recitals in that, but the long story short is the town agrees to transfer to the Sheriff's Department Barry and the home kennel and any personal equipment for Barry. This is not any of the stuff that was in the cruiser. And then in consideration for that, Sheriff's Department will pay the town $6,000 on it before 10 days from the date of this agreement. So, if that is what the town would like to do, then this would be a prudent time to make that motion and approve that. I did, because of the, doing this electronically, I originally had, like I do on a lot of contracts, a signature place for everybody. I've done a new second page, and you can do this with authorization, just allowing Dan to sign as president and Sherry to attest as clerk treasurer.
Richard, do you have any comments right now? I know that you've said, you know, we need to get this accomplished one way or another.
Yeah, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, could I get a motion to approve? Bob, is it?
The interlocal agreement.
The interlocal agreement?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
With that motion, you're authorizing Dan to sign alone?
Correct. Oh, that would be, in that motion, it's for me to sign alone as well. And Sherry?
Was there a second?
Debbie.
Okay. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Steve?
Aye.
Debbie?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Everyone approves.
All right. Reports from committees, boards, and commissions. Starting with Steve, anything?
I have nothing.
Debbie?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay, wastewater. Right now, rather than having meetings in this form, we have, we did not have a meeting last month, and I don't believe, I'm gonna suggest that we don't have a meeting next week. We've had issues with state funding, and so we're working with that, with our Sugar Creek and our engineering, financial team. Other than that, there's really not much to talk about there, so hopefully, we'll be back on track next month. Nathan?
I know we discussed this last month, I just wanted to make mention again with Bob, as soon as we can, I'd like to get that meeting scheduled for the Green Street Bridge with that property owner. But I know it's fluid, it's not a top priority, just wanted to make mention.
He's waiting on you guys to call, whatever. He did mention that, but I told him I didn't know how far everybody was...
I was waiting to kind of have things break this week for allowing more travel, because they are still supposedly essential things, and that hadn't quite worked out, so...
Would it be okay if we hold off until after the 24th?
Of May?
Of May, to make that meeting?
It's pressing or urgent, I just don't want it to fall through the cracks, I just wanted to mention it again. I'm sure Bob hasn't forgotten either.
Still a lot to do, so...
Okay, Bob says still on his to-do, and that kind of meets with the next stage of the governor's back-on-track plan.
Sure, thanks, Bob.
Sure.
Anything else, Nathan?
There was some mention of the millings. We've had some other people ask about that, too. Until we have that pre-construction meeting with Milestone, that would be the appropriate time to inquire about getting some of those.
The millings? I agree. We can take their name and number, but tell them after, well, just...
Because I'm getting calls, too.
Sherry says she's getting calls as well. I would just say, collect, let them know to keep watching or keep paying attention to our meetings and our notes in the paper. Anything else, Nathan?
Nope, that's it.
Jeff?
Well, I guess in light of the COVID virus, I don't think we've even discussed, and it's obviously it's May right now, has been any consideration. I would think about this, about July 4th and the fireworks. I've seen some towns have, decide not to have theirs, now I haven't seen locally, but I think there's something we need to think about.
The chairman had given me a final thought. The thought was we could have them, there would be no problem happening, because most people could watch it from home there in town. You know, there's plenty of room spread out in the park, we could use part of the baseball diamond for these, there's nothing going on there for seating, and I always had to measure it off the distance. And like I said, most people can sit from home. We're kind of waiting on the...
I heard you right, Jeff, you're saying to have them, but people watch it from their house, I couldn't...
I think, Jeff, I mean, is the park be open? I mean, there's plenty of room to spread out there, people send their cars, and they send it home.
What about the people that are coming?
Are you gonna be able to, I mean, are you gonna be able to control that? I don't know.
Yeah, what about the people that are coming from out of town?
I mean, there's a lot of room in the park, behind the fire station, there's a lot of room for people to spread out.
So, does everything open, back up on July 4th?
Yeah, it's all, there's no rules. Rules in the park.
Have they purchased the fireworks yet?
I don't know if they've purchased them yet or not. They have given, they have, they make the final decision, they pay for them, told them we had no problem setting them off if they wanted to go forward.
Who's your main contact?
Beth.
I'd like to table this and think of, do a little more investigating right now. Everyone on the phone okay with that? Anyone, any other comments I should say before we, I suggested tabling it?
I'm fine with it, I mean, maybe shut some other towns, see what they're doing. It's just that, I don't know how you can control, you know, how you can control the crowd and keep them in cars and houses and, believe me, I want the fireworks to happen as much as anybody, but I'm happy to see some pretty good reasoning.
Aren't there really two questions here? One is shooting them off, and in case they have to make a decision to buy them before your June meeting, are you at least able to say, yes, we'll agree that if they buy them, that the fire department would help shoot them off? And then that second question, which is probably more important, whether you shut off the park or allow people to come into the park?
I mean, I understand as of July 4th, everything's open.
It says no travel restrictions.
Yeah, there's no restrictions at that point in time.
And it's my thought, like Jeff said, even if there's not a crowd at the park and you set the fireworks off, everybody can see them in town, I mean, so...
But there's still gonna be a crowd.
There'll be a crowd, sure, but people can self, self-serve.
I'm just saying that if you wanted to make, split it into decisions and you're not quite comfortable yet to say, yeah, the crowd can come, but at least you can still shoot them off, just in case Beth needs to know something before your June meeting, that's all.
Can you call Beth and find out? I'd like to talk about this this week, but could you call her? Any, start the email chain?
I sure will.
We'll make a decision, Jeff, as quick as possible, but I think we need more information right now.
Jeff, I sure will. And I'll let you know in a minute.
And Richard, please.
And Richard, okay.
Jeff, are you good with that? Martis?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I just think it's something we definitely have to address, having them or not having them, because you don't want to go too late into it, so, yeah, I'm fine with that, Dan.
Okay. We'll, we'll try to resolve this as quick as possible. Other things, Jeff?
No.
All right. Town marshal?
I don't really have anything.
Okay. Jeff?
Good.
Okay. Bob?
Nothing.
I have a couple things. How long are we going to receive and accept applications and resumes for the town reassignment?
Good question. I think it probably needs to be, we can evaluate during the time we have, we're still receiving them, but due to the COVID-19, I'm sure people have slowed down on things. I would say if there's some that we need to review, we can look at them, but I would like to go...
I could scan or send them to you guys, I mean...
Could you scan, yeah?
Yeah.
Could you send them to us and at least, yeah, let us look at them? But I think we need to keep going, you know, May 24th is the next level of, and then June 14th, I'm all for collecting them for, even till July 1st. I mean, does anyone, if we find somebody that we're all happy with, of course, we don't have to go that long, but I think we ought to keep it open longer. Any comments on the phone?
Dan? I didn't really hear what you said, I'm just, so I don't miss anything, what are you talking about?
We're talking about the, the open position here for the town?
Okay.
And how long we collect resumes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I would like to go a little longer and see what we get.
Thank you, Debbie.
I can do it. And then I have one more thing. Previously, Milestone would, when they're working on 70, would get water at the, out at the industrial park. Well, then Doug started losing a lot of water, and they weren't sending any invoices, and we wouldn't know when they would get water, so he locked them. They're calling and wanting water again. Well, we're right in the middle of that water audit right now, to where we can find out where our water losses are, so I didn't know how you wanted to handle that.
Water theft can be a very big issue for communities, I'm well aware of it. In fact, they get prosecuted in other communities. I, I would rather leave the locks on there and meter it. We're going through an audit right now, and we really need to find out what percentage of our water we're losing. So, I say keep it locked. They're more than welcome to call and contact and work it out with our water guys, but it's on, they go out there and they meet them at their convenience.
Can we meter that?
Yes, and we will meter that.
Okay, so I could tell them just to call Chris or Lonnie or call Lonnie, and then he could meet them out there and get, okay.
Yeah.
That's good, because then we would be able to take them with.
We want it locked in between times.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Is the cemetery, is that pump locked up there?
I think it's disabled, because we had somebody taking water from up there to truck loads.
It was?
I think we disabled the spigot, if I remember.
I'll go ahead and shut that.
That'll stop that one.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and shut that. I remember they used to take tanks up there, so...
Right, truck loads, yeah.
Yeah.
Sherry, other?
I would agree with you, Dan, but basically keeping that locked.
Well, for now, I don't think it will ever be unlocked, but for now, they'll have to go through Lonnie and...
Well, yeah, that's what, basically, they got to call us for our convenience.
Right, you're right. It may not be convenient for them, but sorry.
We haven't opened the city building up yet, either.
Okay, and that's...
It's fun to know that, okay.
That's fine. What's the ETA?
Well, I, until we, it's not, we really don't have the room to allow any, but two people to stand inside that little area. So, I was, I was going to do June 15th, but I wasn't sure if that was the, if that would be the right date, or if I should wait or go sooner. The bill pay online is working well, and the people dropping them in the drop box is going good. I really had needs.
Everyone, can you hear what Sherry was saying?
Not a word.
Okay. Sherry has said that she has not opened up the city building yet, because in the vestibule or in the waiting area, she could only end up with two people, and Sherry, I guess what you're saying is, many times, there's more than that in here.
Right, at the first of the month.
At the fir, yeah, at the first of the month, everybody's here paying their bill. She is considering opening on June 15th after the, I think, stage four, and being the size of the area, I'm okay with that. She said the drop box is working out well, the online pay is working out well, people are still finding ways to, to pay their bills.
What do we do right now if someone wants to buy a building permit?
We tell them, one, usually I go outside and then just give them...
So, you meet them outside?
I meet them outside, we don't bring them in. Now, the gun permits, like today, somebody was upset because they were told that they could come in and pay, but we just don't let anybody come in, so we totally put it in the drop box, and they ended up doing that. Then the police have to finish the report and the permit or whatever, and do it that way.
So, Bob, since Sherry's an elected official, doesn't she make the decision when she wants to? So, it's really not our decision, other than it's...
Other than town administration, I mean, most places kind of do it jointly, but it's pushing the shove, it is her call in the city building.
Any comments from the phone?
I think it's as quell as is, I agree with Sherry.
What we'll do then, shoot for June 15th?
Sure, yeah, let's, that will get you past the first of the month in June, and so that'll really be, you'll see your first push in about July 6th or 7th.
Right, yeah.
So...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else?
Bob, is Bob?
Bob, none?
None.
All right. Anything that we've missed, any comments? Hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
I'll second.
Great, do we do a roll call vote?
I think I would say...
Okay.
Vocal's fine.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Awesome. That's quorum.
Yeah, it's quorum. All right, thank you, everyone, for calling in.
Aye.
Thank you.